And if you were gonna relook at it, is there a timeframe to do that? I mean, would you say that you're gonna even have this type of discussion with the public in a year? And are you gonna, are you thinking about doing something like that?
You know, I mean, there's certainly no timeline to say, oh, we're gonna revisit this. I mean, one, we're, you know, not getting huge amounts of, you know. And two, you know, there has to be some shake, I mean, personally, looking at the issue of when we change time, you know, the impact on buses if they're running, you know, in the dark. You know, we'll have to take a look at everything, but, you know, if we're two months, barely two months into school, I mean, some of the issues, like some of the buses, when we heard from specific parents that, about problems, you know, Todd Watkins has been on top of this, Andy's, you know, getting input, but there is no, you know, nothing, you know, on our agenda that says, at this point, we're gonna look at this and undo it.
So, just, just kind of in response to your question, Sidney, the, the, I think the only thing that is with us is the meeting with Mr. Bowers. I just asked that we kind of get a mid-year review. I mean, we're having this conversation here, which is helpful, because we don't know what folks are saying to you, and I think it's really important. I think George does an excellent job. Anytime he gets something relative to the schools, he passes it along very quickly, and I would encourage everybody to do that. But a formal presentation to the board has not happened on this issue since the decision was made. There was just the process of implementation. So, kind of looking back and seeing how it's going, we've asked, and I've asked-
We asked for something in the fall.
-for kind of a mid-year instead of the end of the year, because there's some-
In spring.
-there's some things. I mean, the Tier Two elementary schools was the easiest one, because people, parents, if anybody, those were the first to say something, because they were really concerned. The other part of that is just, the duty day ends for our staff at a particular time, and that isn't necessarily when kids have gotten home, right? So, there's, there's that issue. So, as a parent, right, if my kid isn't on the bus, or I don't see my kid at the bus stop, I call the school, right? That's my thought. I don't necessarily think to call transportation. The transportation people are there until the last kid is home. So, there are those kind of things. So, we'll get, we'll get a report and take this piece.
But I think, if anybody who says, you know, has a complaint or concern, you know, they need to, or communicate with the rest, I mean, pass it along.
Yeah, I was just gonna add real quick. I go to a good number of school boards, I try to. The first question that I've been asking every group that I've talked to is, how is, how are the bell times working out? And then we've watched other discussions I have that ask students in every school that I've visited so far, and the reaction's been generally fairly positive among the secondary students I have.
High school.
High school and middle school.
Yeah, I'm a high school parent, and I think that's positive.
Yeah.
The end of daylight savings will also-
Yep, that'll have an effect. Which is why we asked for a report in the spring, you know, beginning of spring.
What I wanna do on this, I'm gonna call on Mr. Elrich. I'm gonna suggest that that might be the last comment on Bell Time, but Mr. Remus, so recognition, if we had a chance on this issue. And then I'd like to take up next the discussion of the refugee, Mr. Elrich.
So, really quickly, the whole of this behind changing the bell times is academic, not irrational. And so, we made a decision taking this down to positive outcomes. So, the question I'd ask is, are you able to measure? I don't expect you to measure in six months, but if, if it has an effect, that ought to inform a decision. If it has no effect, if you don't see any changes in performance or anything, then maybe that, that leads you to other conclusions. But, you know, you all were dragged to do this, because it's widely accepted or believed, you do both, and it can still not be true, that, that later start times, but not if it is.
I don't know that there's a link to academic performance, and I never, I did not raise my hand for this based on that belief. The American Academy of Pediatrics is clear, and this summer, in July, the Center for Disease Control came out and recommended that all high schools and those schools turn later than eight thirty, I mean, no earlier than eight thirty. I mean, that's from the Center for Disease Control and American Academy of Pediatrics. And my beliefs are based on that. I don't know that you, you know, like, many things in research, I don't know that you can say you're gonna see in academic research, but those who are concerned about adolescent health, I mean, the Center for Disease Control, their research this summer in July was pretty darn, really strong.
Then one or the other should show up, whether it's health impact, or kids there.
Well, we did meet with our Principals Association last week, and the Principals anecdotally at our table said, middle school and high school principals said, kids are getting to school on time, ready to learn, not as groggy, so, and they're not tardy for their first period of classes. That, that would tell me anecdotally that it is having some academic impact. And we asked if they could gather any kind of data on that, if they're having less tardies for their first period of classes, these kids are, and, and, you know, like I said, they said they're less groggy, less groggy in the house.
So, if I, if I had supported the transition, and we're gonna pass a new clean transportation, because we're getting positive outcomes, we shouldn't, you know, mess that up, because we're not willing to tackle what we do for, for facilities and buses.
Yeah, if we could provide more buses and facilities, it would be really good. I, you know, it's been brought up about Title, I mean, about the Tier Two elementary schools. This was a problem even before we changed the bus schedule, because my kids went to a Title One school. The parents could not afford childcare. They don't have that kind of flexibility in their jobs to just, you know, just go in late. So, they would drop off their kids, there would be no staff to watch the kids, the principal would have to tell the parents, I can't, I can't take responsibility, there's no staff to watch your kids. And we don't hear from those parents.
And that's the thing, and they're not funny.
I was just gonna say that about this, when you were asking about how many emails we get in reference, in relation to how many we got before. And the problem is, the emails that we got before were from parents who will write four or five times, tell every one of their neighbors or friends, whether they have kids in the system or not, to make a change. And the people that are the most dramatically affected, or most negatively affected, they don't write to us.
And I believe, I was at Greencastle Elementary School, the first aid school, that it was a, I think it's a Tier Two, is it?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Both of your points.
And there were dozens of parents there lined up before school that needed to drop off their kids. And the staff are just as accommodating as they can be, but there's only so much you can ask when they're trying to prepare for the day, so.
Okay, let's get an update on the unaccompanied minors and any information you have about refugees.
Maria Yan. So, good morning, Maria Navarro, C A O, for M C P S. Our international enrollment last year was at a peak high. Our initial numbers-
What's the definition of international enrollment?
International enrollment-
What does that mean precisely?
Are students who are coming from outside of the United States, and who haven't been in the United States within the last two years or ever.
So, they don't have a Montgomery County residence?
No, so they're coming through the International Center, because they are Montgomery County, they're new Montgomery County residents, so they're going through the International Center to register, rather than going to a local school. Because they usually bring in transcripts from abroad, for school records from abroad, and we work together with H H S to do the international enrollment, to assess for English language needs, and to do the vaccination, the look of the vaccination records all in one location. And actually, this summer, we expanded to be two locations, one down county, which has historically always been the case, in Rock and Horse Road. And then we went up county, because we saw the need for families that live up county to have easier, an easier access to a up county location. So, we were in two places.
And where is that?
In the up county regional center.
Regional service.
And we also expanded our time to include evenings and Saturdays for our families. So, our numbers overall are not as high as last year. I have to get to the actual numbers, and I'm happy to do that post-面上.
Well, I'm not sure the H S and committees are gonna meet on this, I'm sure we'll have those numbers for that.
Yeah, we'll have a full report, we're coming back to the ed committee.
What's the date on that?
November fifth.
November fifth, okay.
And we also have not seen the same numbers of students that are coming through the refugee centers, but the numbers are still high. And so, the uptick from last year has prompted us to work closely with H H S and our guidance counselors, and our process for supporting students as they come in, to rethink the whole process. That's one of the things that we will update the ed committee on. And it also has prompted us to not only provide training for staff, but also rethink about resources, and how we are using, maximizing our resources in terms of getting students and their families to connect with our schools and learn about our schools as, as soon as possible, and to have a liaison with the, our offices for, in our E S O office, to have a liaison that you can go back to and ask questions about anything as a parent for navigating the system. But we are also coming back, and we're, one of the things that we'll be talking about in county council is the resources countywide, on what exists, and what we believe alongside with H H S and other social agencies within the county to support the, the mental health supports for students, which are long-term, and as well as some of the additional changes that we've made to engage our families a little bit better than we did before.
Okay, I do now, I am reminded that we will have a thorough discussion of this topic the afternoon of Thursday, November fifth. So, I, this is such an interesting topic, I jumped it ahead, but such an interesting topic, I already agreed to have it committee. So, why don't we actually talk about the final exams?
Can I just mention one, another, the unaccompanied minors work group for the county has been doing a lot of good work, and a lot of our staff is a part of that group. And the last meeting actually met with the head of the program for Prince George's County, because they actually have more unaccompanied minors than we do, and are doing a lot of stuff on the ground as well. So, having an informed conversation, because our kids bump back and forth because of the very high mobility rate between High Point High School in Prince George's County and Blair High School in Montgomery County, for instance. So, it's good that we're, you know, having those conversations across lines, because these kids need to be supported no matter where they are.
Thank you, great. Okay, so Ms. Navarro, follow by Mr. Reis.
I also wanna acknowledge the great work that has taken place. I think that Montgomery County really led the way in preparing to address all of these issues in a very comprehensive way, and other jurisdictions, as you said, have had more of an impact. But I look forward to the more comprehensive conversation around this. Before we get to final exams, though, a separate issue, that was just that Washington closed article because of the data that was released about the fact that Latino students outnumber other groups, and came about first, right, second, I think. And so, with that, I was just curious to see if the board has had any conversations about what would this mean? I mean, I assume that this is gonna be a sustainable sort of trend, which in my opinion calls for, you know, zeroing in on some best practices that I know have been in place in other parts of the country, in terms of things like dual language, the issue of teacher diversity, I mean, all of those things. Wonder if the board has had any opportunity to talk about that, or if they plan to do so.
So, just, not directly related, but the teacher diversity initiative is one that has been a real concern, and, you know, Andy's done a great job, and I think we're moving forward. Having hired Dr. Tang, our new in charge director, associate, is significant for the system, because I think we're now in a place where we can really put together a plan, and I think that's major. But I do think that the conversation is needed in terms of really understanding the tiers that we have to deal with, because it's not, in, in full agreement with humanity, it's not just simply a matter of, we have more students coming from unaccompanied minors or E S O students.
But I like to separate that issue, because the unaccompanied minor issue is a phenomenon that occurred, it was not really predicted. The issue of the Latino student population growth, these are kids who were born in Montgomery County, maybe second generation kids, et cetera. The trend, we've seen it, and so-
Facing the reality of a bilingual county.
Right, so, so, so a comprehensive look in terms of what best practices have been adopted in other parts of the country where they have majority populations like these, just so that we can learn, and have a very robust system, because if you keep projecting it out, you know that the trend is gonna continue. And if we don't acknowledge that, then our results will not yield what we're looking for. So, so just as a general conversation, because, I mean, I was pretty surprised by the fact, I mean, I, I've seen the trend for a long time, but it's happening, you know, very mad.
Well, maybe Andy or Larry wanna talk about the workforce diversity initiative, because we do have a plan in place, and I think the very most important first step has been taken, and that's in hiring our new head of human resources, and she's great, you should meet with her, whatever.
And staff development, I think is also important.
Staff development's very important.
It's not just about having, you know, teachers of color, but it's also making sure that everybody has an opportunity to-
And we are gonna be getting an update on cultural proficiency in the school system at one of our upcoming meetings that you might be interested in, he has the next one.
And there's just the teacher workforce diversity initiative coming to the head committee in November.
I'm sorry, but we didn't have any more problems.
Mr. Reis?
Well, I just wanted to, just very, very quickly, the Migration Policy Institute actually recognized Montgomery County for its great work with unaccompanied minors and the things that are going on with children feeling violence, with our vulnerable immigrant youth, and so, we are seeing great things. So, kudos to you, Dr. Navarro, to superintendent to the board, for some of the innovative things that we're seeing. But as council member Navarro said, it is something that is much larger than that, is we address that particular issue, which is separate from what we're seeing in our community that we still need addressing, the achievement gap for both, all of our minority students, including African-American and Latino and Hispanic students. Because as, as we see that, that rise, and for our special education students as well, we've got to make progress in those areas. And so, what we can glean from other jurisdictions that are doing some creative and innovative things, and not all of them will work here from Montgomery County, we understand that, but as we continue to look at best practices for others, I encourage us to keep doing that, because that will help keep us at the forefront, and keep getting us the kudos that we got when it came to unaccompanied minors.
And however you all can help us better support our Latino families is very welcome, because as we know from the performance data, they are performing the least well, and we-
African-Americans are the least well-performing, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so, but we do, because of this, this, you know, this data coming in, we have a lot, I think it's, what is it, ninety-six percent of our businesses in Montgomery County are small businesses. We have a lot of those businesses are Hispanic-owned. How can we better support those Hispanic businesses, and, you know, for the families of these kids, and, you know, work together as partners and all that.
And then it's probably the community foundation is releasing a report on a disconnected youth.
Yeah.
I'd like to commend Dr. Navarro for the programs. She mentioned it here about the up county center, which we never had before, because transportation, on public transportation is a nightmare. So many changes to buses or whatever. But, yeah, and, you know, Gafer'sburg and Germantown are not easy to get to, from Silver Spring, a lot of our people from Silver Spring, although we know they've moved up to Gafer'sburg. Also, the METS program and SEPA, our programs for students that are unaccompanied or whatever, who come in with language deficiencies, and may not be able to graduate by the time they're twenty. So, these are programs that will help them maybe get an entry-level job, and continue to be able to support themselves and their families, and maybe go on to school after that. So, I think we're moving in the right direction, and also hiring more people, period, for the language learner.
Let me quickly commend our communications team, who just came out with some additions to the communication strategy we already have, specifically targeting the Latino communities. I think that's some stuff, and I know that we're gonna be talking about internet access, and a lot of those things have been targeted to online interfaces, although those communities don't always have access to those, so I think that that's something we're still working on.
All right, what's your about finals and policies?
So, you know, in terms of the overall picture of assessment, I mean, there has been lots of conversation at the national, state, and local level about the amount of time children are spending assessing. And last year, the state superintendent of schools asked local districts to look at what they're doing in terms of layering on to the assessment. The interim superintendent came out with four ideas, so I'm just gonna ask Eric Lang to, he can better speak to all of this than I can. We, in July, adopted the elimination of the two-hour high school exams that are given in middle schools, or two-hour exams given in middle schools, except that if you take a high school course in middle school for high school credit, you have to take the same kind of assessments as high school students. Eric, do you wanna talk about it? We're also looking at the grading policy.
Sure, we're also looking at grading as well, because currently, in our system, the final exam counts as one part of the semester exam. So, right now, there's three grades, marking period one, marking period two, and a semester exam, and then marking period three, and marking period four, and a semester exam. So, if you eliminate final exams, you have to relook at how your grading students within the semester. We're replacing the semester exams with what we're calling marking period assessments, and those would be given in each of the four marking periods, and would count as a part of the marking period grade. Those assessments would be centrally developed and given consistently across the system in the areas where we currently have system-developed final exams. Many districts have teacher-developed, a lot of teacher-developed final exams. We, as a system, put in place, we wanted some systemic measures across the district for our students, so we can look at how students were doing across all of our different schools, classroom to classroom, school to school. And we wanna keep those kinds of measures in our, in our current system by keeping the marking period assessments.
Ms. Wery?
So, can you just explain what you've done for high school? There are no final exams?
No, there are final exams this year. There's, there were several years now. In A P and I V courses in June, when we would have a two-hour final exam, well, we have not had county-wide final exams in those courses. This year-
That's because they have that.
They have that.
And they have their own. So, for everybody else.
And this year, for courses that have either the PARC assessment, or the H S A at high school, there will not be a final exam.
Well, just those existing, there's no exams, do they test cumulative knowledge?
Yes, they do. And, you know, but the scores, we don't see, I mean, until months later. So, we've had the experience, it's been in place since two thousand nine, that we, in A P and I V, we have not had final exams, you know, county-developed final exams. The final exams count of twenty-five percent of your report card, of your semester grade. So, the, the piece is that there would still be centrally-developed end-of marking period assessments, so that, you know, you-
Is that a test?
Yes, yes. You know, Jack Smith, the interim superintendent of schools, at when we were in need, talked about the role of assessments and testing. I, I think that his one definition was particularly right on point, that the purpose of assessing is to interrupt forgetting, and interrupting forgetting at the end of the marking period is having that ability to also see across schools, and, and within a school, from teacher to teacher, is important.
Which is why having centrally established assessments are important. But for me, I'm just gonna say as a parent, and I don't know, you know, you guys have to say, once your kid takes a final exam at the end of the year, for example, you don't even get the grade till after school's already finished. There's no learning opportunities from it, no, no children are going back over the answers and saying, oh, this is what I did wrong, and here's why I got that answer wrong. So, with a, you know, more frequent assessments, they'll have better opportunities for it.
I'm just confused by the, the language perhaps. I think that, or it's like-
Assessment is not a test?
It can be a task, it can be a project, it can be, anybody that you're set-
It's not a test.
No, you're a student. Yeah, but it's, it's your assessing learning.
The other piece for people who don't have high school students, the way we do final exams in Montgomery County, and it's been for many years, is that every course, period, has a two-hour final exam. So, we have a week of exams in January, a week of final exams in June. So, you have, say, P E and algebra, you know, period one and period three, you're having that final exam on Mondays, you only go to school, you're only going for the one exam, because you're not having a final exam in P E. So, we're losing a week of instruction at two times a year.
And that won't no longer be the case, right?
Right.
No more movies?
No more movies, yeah. And other pieces, and many courses, they begin structured review the week before. So, you know, you're, we will be gaining more structural-
But this is actually aligning with the benchmarks, with a number of different school districts and colleges and universities. In fact, we just met with some M A B folks yesterday for the legislative briefing, and Anna Rendell County's folks are doing this, and they say they haven't received pushback at all.
There are two representatives to community colleges who are there who said, we're doing the exact same thing.
They're doing the same thing at their community college, yeah. They're doing, at the community college level, they're actually changing assessments to more what's called authentic learning. And I've checked in with folks who were friends, whose kids are up and down the East Coast at different colleges, and they're going to portfolios, projects, reflection, whatever. And the other thing that people are missing is that final exam time period is not, is not as actually closely, as closely aligned with college exam period. So, the quarterly finals more aligns with the typical week period, that college time period.
Okay, had Mr. Elrich called by, Mr. Lee called by, Mr. Park.
So, I had the choices of working in the school system through I S M, C R Ts, M S P A Ps, and M S As. And for M S P A Ps and M S As, in some subjects, you could never sit in the classroom and take a test. There was absolutely not a measurement of anything anybody learned in the entire year. And on the math part, the state dictated that you give credit for wrong answers. They looked for the glimmer, and that was not a joke, you know, there was all this rule, and that was really, you know, was this real or not? Having sat in the room and been told by state people who sat in the room with us, we look for glimmer. So, you score a test, you use the word you wanted them to use, whether they used it correctly or not, they got credit for that. So, I looked at all this testing, yes, really. We would sit in the room, and people would call out letters from an answer a kid had written, and teachers would try to ascribe a word to the letters that were called out, in the hope that you could ascribe the proper word to the letters. So, this is my experience, and I graded these tests. And also, I did try to get this with the superintendent of the board, and I went over to the high school in Tilden, where we were grading them, and not a member of the board nor the superintendent of the board would watch this. I thought it would be instructive for them, because these are very high-stakes tests, and if you can get credit for wrong answers, they're not telling you very much. And as a teacher, you could not use a M S P A test or an M S A test to place a kid in a group for following years. So, we started administering the battery of tests I actually thought were really good, not the C R Ts, the ones we used at the beginning in September, where you place kids, and there was a reading test in the form-
Example. Yeah.
And those tests actually tested actual skills, actual ability. But to have a high-stakes test that doesn't do that, and then have to sort your class after a week into a school based on these other tests, to me, is almost a waste of mental, intellectual energy and everything. But I'm concerned about the testing, because if you don't see how they're scoring, and you don't see what the rubrics are, you don't know if the tests are valid or not. And so, I was the last group, or next to last group, that was allowed to score tests in the county. And after my experience, and the schools, I was asked by the school superintendent, the top of the praise people in the press, about how these things were done, the county changed this. They also took the test scoring out of the counts. Test scoring used to be done by teachers like me, who could look at this and reflect on what does this mean? Now, the test scoring is either in St. Louis or Austin, but it was moved far away from here, North Carolina, so that nobody could see that. And I think it's important that you understand what the rubrics are for scoring, and what's actually being measured, because you can get very false results out of a test, and think you're doing fine. And we talk about, you know, proficient, which is our, which is close to our gold standard for everybody, but you can be, you could have been proficient on the M S A test as one of your fifth-grade principals today, by getting twenty-two- your fifth-grade principals to him by getting twenty-two out of forty-three questions right. And that could have been scored as proficient. Everybody knows that's not proficient. So I think it's important if you're going to work down this place that you actually understand how things are being scored and are they actually going to give you data that you're going to use?
Your staff might want to respond to that because that is something that they're probably going to.
I think you, I think.
This is probably not the local test.
Yes, right. I think we're mixing things up. You're talking about ultimately what is PARC, right?
Right, but I'm also familiar with portfolios and this other stuff. You all need to make sure that whatever you score legitimately measures what it is you're trying to measure.
Right, that conversation is one to have with Dr. Lang and that's the conversation that we are having and what we're doing with our strategic planning committee, in fact, is to dig into that and have these conversations with Dr. Lang, Dr. Navarro, because the issue is, and I think maybe this would help folks who aren't understanding, when we're looking at assessments and kind of, over the last six or nine months, the Strategic Planning Committee has really kind of dug deep into our assessment strategy and our actual assessments. The issue is what do students know, what do they not know, what do we need to reteach, how do we need to deal with that, right? And what are the tools that we're using to understand that, right? As a former teacher, you wanted to make sure you understood if Johnny could or couldn't read, how did they, where were they failing, if they were failing, where were they strong, right? So that you could. You want to be able to use it, you wanted it to be diagnostic, right? You wanted it to be applicable. And that's what we're dealing with.
And you get that from the finals and not the exam.
So part of the issue with these, these final assessments, and it's important not to just simply call them final exams because they may be portfolios, there may be multiple ways for us to understand if a student can apply what they know, which is part of what we have to do as educators, right? We have to figure out what are the multiple pathways for a student to be able to demonstrate to us that they understand what has been taught and what is to be required of them, right? So I think it's a different conversation when you talk about these standardized tests that are forced on us basically by the state, right? We don't really have a choice in PARC. We have to figure out, and we're going to get a update on PARC diagnostic, which is a part of what PARC is doing. And we have to see, is it valuable? But that's why we made a decision to go with MAPR and MAFM to understand how our students are doing and to put more value in that because that actually helps our teachers to then teach and reteach if they need to.
I think that part of the strategy is that you'll have different types of assessments. So if a student is selling one type of assessment like a school fortress has on a portfolio setting, they either learn, they're supposed to vary constantly, it's just expressing themselves in a legitimate way. Montgomery County collaboration, all of them said that the number one, school readiness or really moral communication, I don't think that's something our current tests are assessing. So I think that we're looking at multiple ways to assess our students' knowledge.
Right, and giving students a way, a multiple ways to show what they know is important, you know? And, but we were saying about, one thing is the consistency in grading, what that means if research papers or the final project, how are we going to make sure that we're consistently graduating, I mean.
I'll just say that, you know, I get all this stuff about multiple measures, but at the end of the day, when someone goes to work, it's certainly work for someone else. Someone's either going to give them a written instruction or a verbal instruction. No one's going to dance the instructions or sing the instructions or do the rest of the stuff. So the fact that you can go home and demonstrate.
I haven't heard writing and dancing and singing mentioned.
These are all multiple intelligences.
Right, but research papers, portfolios, that show an accumulation and assessment.
So I'm just concerned that, you know, you can measure it that way, but if it doesn't translate into, if you say you're okay because you've done a portfolio, but the skills that took you to do a portfolio don't make you employable because you're never going to get the opportunity to do it that way, it's not a very good measure. At the end of the day, someone's got to be able to read an instruction or listen to somebody talk and be able to make the right decisions, whether you're a manager, whether you're an employee. This is.
It's a good thing in our education.
It's not a question of whether, they need to read and write and do that. Okay. But if you think about how you work and how adults work, it's collaborative. They work on a project together. These are the consequences that they'll be teaching in these classes, they will be, you don't work together?
People in the real world. I'm in fact, I learned today.
People work, people work, I did give instructions with four kids and I watched them, went through all the work because they were terrified about their grade while other kids didn't know words, you know, telling us we're terrified children.
We just met with a few people and they were telling us what they need for people to have on the job. We cannot keep up in the schools with the technology that's coming out every day, but we can teach the technology we have, but we need to make sure that students are receptive to training once they get there. And one of the persons said, we don't want you to do all that extra training, we will do it when the person is hired, but you're absolutely right, they need to be able to read and write and not look at their cell phone when they're doing interviews.
Yep.
Just a last question.
The topic of technology, I'm really excited about the Chromebook deployment and I just wanted to say, I know it's something that is on all your minds, that as that becomes more important to the curriculum, to learning in schools, the issue of whether kids have access to Chromebooks at home and broadband at home is going to become more and more important to us. And I'm a little concerned by reports I've heard about buying Chromebooks for the classroom. Perhaps it's still in its early phases of deployment, but it seems to me our intention that they are, that they are fundamental to education and that would be something that I thought, you know, is a school system responsibility only. But I wanted to find out how the deployment is going and then, I'm aware of programs like Comcast has a very, very low-cost sign-up, you know? Perhaps we could work together on something, you know, leveraging county relationships with Comcast, our franchise negotiation, there may be opportunities for us to do a lot more to, you know, get that technology into the hands of families in need.
Okay, we'll get one response from the school system, does that come from Mr. Barkley?
So.
Larry's the sure one.
Mr. Bowers, yeah, Mr. Bowers.
So the deployment isn't going as well as we expected because it ran into something called budget problems. So we were able to.
This was part of the savings plan you tried to tap into.
We made some adjustments and so we were going, we were able to go to fourth grade this year, so maybe third, fourth and fifth. We were able to partially go to seventh grade and so we were going to do a full rollout in seventh grade. We worked with our high school principal because originally it was in one subject area and we asked them to work to figure out how to deploy the card they have in the more subject areas.
So seventh grade is happening this year or next year?
Seventh grade is partial. It was a hundred and fifty classrooms across the thirty-eight schools. So again, this rollout isn't what we had expected because we're going to go four more grades this year, so we have to maybe one at a time.
That's too bad. You know, I think that's unfortunate that you had to make that kind of decision. There weren't a lot of decisions I think we had to make on the county side. It had such a significant impact against so many thousands of kids, so I'm frustrated to hear that.
Certainly, we heard a lot and so, I mean, the original decision was, we eliminated three million dollars, everything we had in the operating budget for rolling the Chromebooks. So again, we had to make some tough decisions in the tech mod project because we actually had to delay the replacement of all of our lab trinkets and a lot of them, so it was a hard decision. So, and we're facing a big problem next year, obviously, we're all facing a very, very tough budget next year. So this is going to be a tough decision and so if you're hearing that some PTAs are buying them, they're buying them because, you know, we're not able to do the rollout that has been in original vision. So it's a challenge we're all facing in terms of how we're actually going to do this.
All right, okay, that's all we've got for this morning. Thank you. I wonder if this was a good discussion, I appreciate it.